The House will come to order. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Mr. Speaker. I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate file. Herewith transmitted, Senate File Number 2 and Act Relating to State Government, Establishing the Health and Human Services Budget. The message is signed Cal. Our Aludaman Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate files.
First reading, Senate File Number 2, an Act Relating to State Government, Establishing the Health and Human Services Budget.
There's a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Dean M. moved that the rule therein be suspended and in urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that Senate File Number 2 be given its second, third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Recognize the member from Washington, Representative Dean, to that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. That is my motion.
Any discussion on the Dean motion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. Clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number 2.
Second reading. There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number 2.
Third reading. Discussion on the bill. The member from Washington, Representative Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members. This is the Health and Human Services Omnibus Finance Bill. It is all of the financing for both the healthcare programs for the state of Minnesota and the social services programs for the Minnesota. We have a budget that had to meet target at minus $463 million in general fund spending in 1819, minus $273 million in 2021, and the tails. The bill accomplishes that with several provisions that fund the priorities within the targets that we were given. This bill focuses primarily on the needs of the most needy Minnesotans, disabled children, abused children, and the disabled, also services for seniors and others that receive care through our program services. We have several innovative ways to save money within the bill, some of which were adopted in the final bill that you have before you, some of them weren't. We've tried very hard and fought very hard for some of the House's more innovative ways to bend the cost curve, to take some money out of the forecasted growth in this. We were less successful than we wanted to be in that area especially. We have, and we also have new spending that really targets the needs of kids, disabled kids in particular, for targeting services for children in the home who are disabled. We are very proud of the work that the committee did to really target aid towards abused children, neglected children, and also children that are recovering from or living with disabilities. I'm very proud of the work the folks of the committee, Representative Franz's work with childcare, as also several provisions within this bill that we are very proud of. Members, this bill also provides a lot of additional funds for the governor's provisions for our state-operated services, so more folks in headcount and some of the folks that are particularly in our state hospital and state services so that have seen increases within that area. $170 million of the governor's provisions in additional funds specifically targeted towards his priorities, but primarily trying to share the priorities of the state of Minnesota to take care of our folks in most need. The amendment that was adopted in the Senate that took quite a bit of time to digest and look at was addressing some of the concerns specifically of the departments of human services, so working back and forth with the governor's office clarified many of the technical and a couple non-technical changes within that. The one provision that was just removed in the Senate was statewide competitive bidding, a Representative Zerwas provision that I think is an innovative idea that we should move ahead with in the future. Some of the other provisions that we were not able to adopt, I know the state of Minnesota will be doing direct contracting and bidding to get more competitive services, to get more bang for the buck, particularly for people who purchase healthcare in the state of Minnesota. That's a very, very limited overview of the bill and the priorities of the bill. I'd be happy to take any questions and comments. Thank you very much, members.
Further discussion on the bill. The member from St. Louis, Representative Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First, I really want to thank the staff for working so hard on this bill. It's a 672-page bill that we received today. Passing this bill, as my sons Otis and Louis would say, is a really, really, really bad idea. First, it's fiscally irresponsible to pass this bill since this bill, along with the tax cuts to corporations and the wealthy few, will soon lead to large budget deficits. Second, the bill exhausts the Healthcare Access Fund, a fund that pays for Minnesota care, which covers 100,000 Minnesotans, some of the most vulnerable, children, the elderly, I mean, children, the disabled, those that need state support. Third, we have already given $900 million to health insurers, but the GOP is cutting Health and Human Services by $463 million, a cut that also affects the most vulnerable in Minnesota. Fourth, there's a $22 million shift to counties with very little tools for them to become more efficient and save money. Counties will be forced to increase taxes, so this bill, by passing it and voting yes, you are voting for a tax increase on all Minnesotans. The GOP will say they're reducing healthcare costs, but they're simply shifting costs to counties and to taxpayers. The HHS bill is a house of cards with one-time spending of $1.2 billion in 2018, 2019. What happens in 2020, 2021? It all falls down. Minnesotans deserve better. I'll be voting no.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Considine.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am very grateful to see that the staffing provisions for the Minnesota Security Hospital are in there. They were not when the bill left here before. I can't tell you how much, though, that I do appreciate that, although I had two priorities coming into this session. The other one was the home healthcare workers and the home healthcare nurses, and there still is not a penny in there for them. Representative Hamilton mentioned in his presentation that these people are living at below 50% of the poverty level right now. I believe there's something in the neighborhood of 8,000 to 9,000 of these jobs that they cannot find people to work, and these are the people that take care of the developmentally disabled, the mentally ill, and our elderly. This is something that we are going to have to address. My hope is that it doesn't completely explode on us before next year, but, folks, we have to do something for these people. There are 80,000 hard-working Minnesotans that are living at 50% of the poverty rate. That is extremely disturbing, and we need to get back to work and do something for them. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Davney.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members. The last time that we saw a Health and Human Services bill come through this chamber, it included $4 million in the expansion of school-linked mental health grants, and those grants were targeted at school districts that had not yet fully benefited from the access to these grants, to schools where students needed that support, where faculty needed that support, and it wasn't available. This is a program that we have bipartisanly been building over the last number of years, expanding children's access to the mental health services they need in the school buildings that they go to each and every day. This was going to be another positive step forward that now is gone from the bill. School-linked mental health works for kids because it's delivered where they need it, where they are. It works for parents and families because their child is able to access the support that they need in a place that they already are, that reduces the barriers to access to mental health services. And it works for teachers and principals and administrators because they can better work on the work of learning with a student who can better attend and focus and engage and be there with them and for them. It's a loss to this bill. It's a loss to those kids and families and schools. For that reason and many others, I'll be a no vote. Thank you.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Loffler.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members. I rise to make sure that members understand how this bill will increase property taxes significantly throughout the state. Minnesota has designed its Health and Human Services system to be state-supervised but county-implemented, and when the state-mandated services are inadequately funded, or as in this bill, costs are shifted to the county that previously were paid for by the state, the counties have no choices but to raise property taxes so that they fulfill the mandates that we put upon them, and they have almost no flexibility in implementing those mandated programs. As Representative Schultz pointed out, this bill creates a major new county obligation to fund Min choices. This will increase property taxes in every county and statewide total over $22 million. In addition, there is no increased funding to respond to really big growth in some of the things that counties are mandated to respond to. I've had distributed a copy of an article that points out just in the last year, child protection reports of abuse and maltreatment were up 25%. This is the second year of double-digit increases in those reports. Some of it's due to the OPI epidemic, some of it's due because of more publicity and people responding and feeling comfortable to report. We had last year 26 kids killed by people that they knew, a record number for our state, something we should not be proud of. There's no money for additional social workers to respond to this growing work. What happens when we respond to a child protection case? We take those children away from their parents, away from their home while things get settled. We try to find a foster parent to take them. Do you know what we pay foster families? $18 to $22 a day for 24-hour care unless they happen to be disabled or have unique needs. $18 to $22 with no childcare guarantee. We can't find foster families. So these kids are staying in hospitals. That's not cheap, and if I'm a traumatized kid who's been pulled out of my home, I don't want to live in a hospital. But that's what's happening in counties. Some of them have shelters that are kind of group dormitories, but there's not $1 here to solve the foster care family thing. So that's going to go to counties, increased out-of-home care costs. In addition, counties are still reeling from past cost shifts, particularly in picking up additional costs for our regional treatment centers. That alone in Hennepin County raised our property taxes 3%. There is no inflation increase in any of the other Health and Human Services revenue streams for other mandated services that our counties have to apply. I got information from my county, and their estimate is that it will cost them $10 million a year for Min choices and growing. $13 million in child protection costs, $6 million in additional out-of-home placement costs for abused children, and this $29 million burden alone will result in a 4% property tax increase. And I have to say, since the services and the mandates are uniform across the state, you should probably expect something in that range in your county, and your counties only heard about this today. This is not something that was heard in any bill that was analyzed, so the counties are really trying to figure this out. While I and the counties greatly appreciate Chair David's adding in the tax bill, the $25.5 million in county program aid, that's a big step up, it will be, it will not cover these increased costs in county statewide, and so I thought it was important for all of us to understand that county property taxes will go up with the passage of this bill.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Flanagan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I wanted to just take a moment and thank Governor Dayton. Thank Governor Dayton for throwing down for children and families, specifically as it relates to childcare and the Childcare Development Block Grant. There's additional language that's in the bill, but most importantly, there's 12-month eligibility for families who are on CCAP. This is a family-friendly policy that ensures that we are focused on making sure that families have what they need, have that stability, and can have continuous access to childcare. I look forward to a day when we're able to fully fund and forecast the Childcare Assistance Program and alleviate the waitlist of over 5,000 families who are working families, have a patchwork of care that they're using now, but can learn to, we can learn to really invest and make sure that families, again, can depend on their childcare. Childcare itself is, and the Childcare Assistance Program is a ladder out of poverty. It's a proven two-generation approach and strategy for economic security for families, and a lot of times, you know, we talk about those people and the other. I am those people, and those people depend on us every day. The HHS bill in particular is the bill where we care for children, families, and the most vulnerable, and I think the bill where we have the most responsibility. I hope that the Select Committee on Childcare is able to implement more of the things that we talked about over the past year. And then I just wanted to mention my dismay, the fact that the MFIP cash assistance grant increase is not in this bill. This was an opportunity for bipartisan support to give families a raise, and it's not in there. So the last time MFIP received an increase was in 1986, when I was a first grader in Mrs. Hollenbeck's class, and my family was on MFIP. These are real folks, real people, real lives, and with a little bit of investment, we can give people hope and we can turn their lives around. There's not enough hope in this bill for me. I'm a no.
Member from Olmsted, Representative Liebling.
Mr. Speaker and members, well, I know that we're not allowed to use props on the House floor, but this is its own prop. This is the bill we're talking about tonight, and this is printed double-sided. This is a bill that's 672 pages that was first presented to members at 10:11 this morning. Thank you. Thank you, Representative Lilly. Yeah, I was afraid I was going to drop it all over the floor. So I've spent much of this day trying to figure out what's in that bill, and some of the delay in the Senate was that members over there were trying to figure out what's in it and how this thing actually works. So the first thing I just want to say is how disappointing it is to, again, be faced with such a large and important bill that members really have not had the chance to read. I'm quite sure that probably few of any of us understand it. A lot of the provisions in it have never been heard in this body, and DFL members were mostly cut out of the work that went into the bill. Secondly, I want to talk about the fact that what's really the most troubling to me about this bill is to talk about that, you really have to talk about what the big picture is right now, where we find ourselves, and that is, obviously, we're one of the 50 states, and obviously, we have a lot of federal interaction with what we do here in our Health and Human Service programs. And everybody knows that Republicans in Congress are working very hard to repeal the Affordable Care Act, and the bill that's come out of the U.S. House of Representatives was just scored by the Congressional Budget Office, and everyone found out that 23 million people will lose their insurance under that bill. But importantly for us as a state, there will be enormous cuts to Medicaid, enormous cuts to the program, the federal funding that supports the things that we're doing in this bill, the things that we do in our Health and Human Services programs in this state. $834 billion in Medicaid cuts nationwide, also an enormous cut to the credits, the tax credits, that lower-income people are using to buy their private insurance. So what we're looking at, whenever this happens, and we don't know when it's going to happen, we don't know exactly what is going to happen, obviously, the U.S. Senate is going to come forward with some kind of matching, somewhat different proposal. We don't really know what it's going to be, but we do know there are going to be cuts, big cuts. And we know that 1.2 million Minnesotans, about a fifth of our population, maybe even more than that, is going to lose some or all of their healthcare coverage. So this is the context we find ourselves in. In the context of this, and I should mention, too, that we saw that President Trump put forward a budget. Now, I understand that Republicans in the U.S. House and Senate aren't too pleased with that budget, but that budget also makes significant cuts that will impact this state. And this state, of course, has a very large, robust healthcare industry. It's a big part of our economy. So in the context of all of that, what do we see? We have a budget surplus this year, started out as $1.65 billion, although I would argue that because we don't count inflation, that it was much smaller than that. And what do we see? We see the Republican majorities in the House and Senate, big tax cuts, taking money out of the General Fund for Transportation, and completely depleting and getting rid of the Healthcare Access Fund. Now, for anybody who's watching and maybe doesn't know all our jargon, and I don't know if people are still watching here in the dark of night, because we're, again, debating these bills in the dark of night, but the Healthcare Access Fund is a fund where we put the monies that come in from the provider tax that we've had for quite a number of years in this state, and that is going to sunset. We, I am not in agreement with it sunsetting now. I think it's really a very irresponsible decision to make when we're facing these huge cuts coming from the federal government. We are also cutting off our own revenue stream that would be available to help with Health and Human Services. So Representative Dean talked about the money that's being saved in this bill, as though that was a great and wonderful thing, but actually, that money is being backfilled with the Healthcare Access Fund. The Healthcare Access Fund is being used up in this bill to replace the, really, the phony cuts that were in the original bill, that were just simply not tenable, stuff that was never going to actually happen. So this bill, as it is now, it still has shifts, tricks, and gimmicks in it, although much less than before, but what it does is it uses up the Healthcare Access Fund so that by the end of the next biennium, that fund is essentially empty, and no more money will come into it. And then what? And then what? So we hear a lot of rhetoric from members of this body about we care about the disabled, people with disabilities, kids who need services, elderly people, and I don't doubt that we all do, but, members, we cannot take care of those people without paying for the care. We can reform our programs, and we should. There are a lot of things we need to do. I don't doubt for a minute that there are wasted dollars in our system, and all of us need to work hard to find those and try to tighten things up as best we can. But I don't think that Minnesotans are ready to see us just dump our Health and Human Services that we have, that we deliver to so many people in our state. This has been a very important part of what Minnesota is, and we're not just talking about our Minnesota Care Program that's only about 100,000 people now. We're talking about everybody, that one-fifth of our population that benefits from our Medicaid program or other programs. This is very serious stuff. So it's late. I know that we've heard a lot about this. We've all had a really long day. Everybody's tired, but I think that what this body is doing, what the Republican majority is doing this year is very irresponsible, and we, you, I hope you will come to regret it because this is going to hurt Minnesotans, and we should not be hurting the people that we come here to serve. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Omar.
Thank you, Speaker. It's so late, and I know most of us are half asleep, and I don't sit on this committee, so I wasn't really going to speak on this bill, but as, you know, Representative Liebling was saying, that it is 682 pages, and hidden in this bill, there's a language that's limiting the number of employees a daycare center can have, a daycare center can employ the parents of children, and this is greatly affecting our community, the Somali community. For the last few months, we've been negotiating with the governor's office, the commissioner, to try to come up with the solution that everyone would be happy with. The organization that represents these daycare centers, Minnesota Minority Childcare Centers Organization, has been working with Chair Appler and the commissioners and the governor's office to try to make sure that they could come to a resolution together. And just like everything else that has been negotiated in what seems to be like a hostage situation, you know, we keep going back on the promises that we make. We keep taking back the promises and the deals that we agree upon, and this is what these daycare centers feel like. Eighty-seven daycare centers owners are just finding out that the deal that they made over the last two months, the deal that was in the bill that passed last time, is no longer being kept, and so that is disappointing to me, it is disappointing to them, and in here, all we have is our word. And to the people that we represent, when we tell them we are going to do something, we must do that. And so I will be voting no on this bill for many reasons, but I just wanted to also raise my objection to us going back on our word. Thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Murphy E.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members, and I will close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members, and I will close us off by saying that this is a whopper of a bad bill. It empties the Healthcare Access Fund of all but $10 million. It will create budget deficits going forward for the first time in a number of years, which is a tragedy for Minnesota and our state budget. And most importantly, it leaves Minnesota families and children, people with disabilities, aging Minnesotans, and veterans without reliable care. The bill and the people it serves are the casualty of your reckless tax cuts, and that's no good for the people of Minnesota. Please vote no.
Any further discussion? The member from Washington, Representative Dean M.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Thank you, Representative Murphy, and the Democrat members of the committee. Thanks also to the Republican members of the committee for all of your hard work on this committee this year in the bills. Want to thank the House Research, Randy Chun, Daniel Pennelli, Elizabeth Clarkfist, Sarah Sunderman, Fiscal Analyst Doug Berg, Ann Fox, DFL Research Cassandra Moore, GOP Research Chelsea Whitman, CLA Shiloh Larson, and the amazing Holly Iverson. Want to just close off by just talking a little bit about where the bill actually did fall short, because I thought maybe some of the folks on the other side of the aisle might point it out, and they didn't. We need to spend more money in certain areas and do things better for certain people, particularly families with disabled kids, moms and dads who go to work every day, have disabled kids at home. We don't do enough, this bill doesn't do enough, to try to help real moms and dads who pay money, try to pay the bills and take care of disabled kids at home. We need to do more, we want to do more of this, we weren't able to do that, and I wish we could have done more. Representative Omar, you also pointed out that we are responding to the measles epidemic within this, and also other, other epidemics that we're experiencing right now in the state of Minnesota. We do have money in that for, to set up a new emergency protection system for that with the Department of Health. Our child protection bill does great work, building on the work that Representative Creisha began last year. Representative Davney, you pointed out the school-linked mental health, which our K-12 bill takes up. It takes an amazing step forward. One, that's a bill and a program that I really didn't know a whole lot about before, and I've learned a lot about it. I've come to believe that that's a good bill, and you have my commitment that I will work with you on that, to make sure that that is border-to-border, wall-to-wall, every school has, every kid has connection to school-linked mental health, because I think that's a good idea. Members, this bill funds, with $14 billion of state resources, people in the dawn and shadows and twilight of life that we need to take care of, we need to do a better job of, but we need to stop measuring our success by how many people we hire in government programs, and how many parking spaces we add on to government buildings, and we need to start measuring it by how many people are made, their lives are made better, and how many people are no longer dependent on government programs, instead of measuring ourselves by how many people are dependent on government programs. So with that, Mr. Speaker and members, I appreciate the great work on this bill and look forward to the work ahead.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. There being 74 ayes and 56 nays, the bill has passed and its title agreed to. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Mr. Speaker. I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate file, herewith transmitted, Senate File Number Four, An Act Relating to Legislative Enactments. The message is signed Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
First reading of Senate files.
First reading, Senate File Number Four, An Act Relating to Legislative Enactments.
There is a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article Four, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Hoppe moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended, so that Senate File Number Four be given its second, third readings, and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize the member from Carver, Representative Hoppe, to introduce your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members, that is my motion. This is the Corrections Bill. There's not much to it, and I would urge members to support this motion.
Any discussion on the motion to declare an urgency on the rule suspension? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, Senate File Number Four.
Second reading. There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number Four.
Third reading. Discussion on Senate File Four, the member from Carver, Representative Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members, I will do a brief reading of the provisions. There aren't very many of them. There are three provisions in the Environment Bill, just, these are just clarifying language and making changes to make sure that everything was uniform all the way through the different sections. The first one was dealing with some riparian aid appropriations, the second, environmental review, final decisions, and the third was dealing with broader spending authority for the DNR. The, secondly, we had a provision in the E-12 bill correcting errors and drafting errors in the E-12. And then on to the jobs, there were five small provisions in the jobs bill, one for deed, one for DOLI, technical changes to MHFA, the DOLI housekeeping bill had one, and then there was one final delay dealing with the Department of Commerce in the jobs bill. These, as they came over from the Senate, have been checked by House Research, and House Research and the Revisors' Office have signed off on these changes. And with that, members, I would stand for questions and would ask for your support.
Any discussion? The member from Ramsey, Representative Pinto.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members, I've checked each of these corrections referenced by Representative Hoppe with the DFL leads in each of these three areas, and they've confirmed that these corrections are appropriate, and I would urge members to support the bill. Thank you, Representative Hoppe. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any further discussion on the bill? Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. Clerk will close the roll. There being 130 ayes and zero nays, the bill has passed and its title agreed to. I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Peppern.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Point of personal privilege.
State your point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. We've been working really hard all session, and we think we've been here a lot of hours, but as you all know, whatever time you've put in here, our staff has been here hours before us and stay hours after us, and we know all of our staff throughout the House have worked hard. But I'd like to extend a sincere thank you, especially to the Chief Clerk's Office, the Sergeant's Office, and the Pages for all the hard work that you do without ever complaining, always knowledgeable, always professional, always work with both sides of the aisle, and we couldn't do without you. So on behalf of all the members of the legislature, thank you for your service. We, we really appreciate it.
First reading of House files.
Introduction, first reading of House File Number Five, An Act Relating to Capital
First reading. There is a motion at the desk. The clerk will report the motion.
Pursuant to Article Four, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Erdahl moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared, and that the rules of the House be so far suspended, so that House File Number Five be given its second and third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
I recognize the member from Meeker, Representative Erdahl, to explain the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, it is my motion, and we want to get to this bill just as quickly as we can.
Any discussion on the Erdahl motion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion prevails. The clerk will give the bill its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number Five.
Second reading. I recognize the member from Meeker, Representative Erdahl, to explain the bill.
Okay. Oh, that's the Revisers' Bill?
There is an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Erdahl moves to amend House File Number Five as follows, and the amendment is coded
I recognize the member from Meeker, Representative Erdahl, to explain the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. As with some bonding bills, there are various, well, shall we say, corrections that have to be made and some others. And so in this one, there are technical changes, there are some project changes, there are project additions, a project removal, and that puts the bill in the order that I would like it. I urge you to vote yes on the amendment.
Any discussion to the amendment, the A-17 amendment? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of adoption of the A-17 amendment signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion prevails. There are, there are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number Five, as amended.
Third reading. Further discussion on the bill, the member from Meeker, Representative Erdahl.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Like to reprise my role as closer for legislative sessions, and, but, but I know that as a former seventh-grade history teacher, it was never wise to stand in the way of seventh graders in lunch. I'm going to try not to spend much time standing between you and adjournment and bed. But just a few words, I'd like to, to thank nonpartisan staff, Andy Lee, Deb Dyson, for their help on this bill, also my partisan staff, my CA Gavin Hansen, Megan Shea from the Senate, of course Jenny Nash from the DFL, my LA Jennifer Gublisch, and of course, Representative Hausmann, and our entire Capital Investment Committee. We have a pretty darn good bill here. I'd call it great, but I am from Minnesota. And based, and this bill is based on last year's bill, it contains some new projects and some critical projects. It's heavy on infrastructure. I think it addresses many of the important needs of the state of Minnesota, and as I say, I think it's a pretty darn good bill, and I'd appreciate your support.
Discussion on the bill, the member from Ramsey, Representative Hausmann.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members, and a special thank you to Representative Erdahl, to Gavin Hansen and Jenny Nash. We, I think, formed a, a very congenial working partnership as we put this together, and we improved this bill at every stage, at the 600 level in capital investment, 800 in Ways and Means, and now the 988. One area particularly along the way that I was a little nervous about, we were, higher education is usually a third of the bill, and we were at about 11%, but now we have doubled that to 20%. So that part of the bill has improved. I have a particular affection for the part of the bill that provides $77 million for housing for those who don't have a safe place to sleep at night, and we will feel that impact all over the, the state. So it is a very good bill, and there is so much added at each stage that we can celebrate. For all members, I, I want to have a couple of words of caution, because I think we all bear a responsibility. It's a hard bill to put together, and there is such stress on it, so many needs all over the state. Higher education was usually a third of the bill, but this time, transportation is a third of the bill, as it was last year. And I think as we depend more on this bill, because we haven't really resolved the issue, the bigger issues in the transportation bill, and rely more heavily on transportation, that does crowd out other needs, and we all feel that. I want to speak specifically about road earmarks, some of which are still in the bill, and here's what happens when someone writes that in. They go to the head of the line against your road project. So if it happens that one particular one gets written in, yours might go down the line. Virtually 100% of transportation finance chairs in the past, in the past decades, from Langseth and Leader to Beard, Holberg, and Kelly, in other words, bipartisan, Democrat and Republican, they wrote us a letter cautioning us against this potential politicizing of road building. And so I, I'd like us all to remember that next year as we move ahead with this, with this work. And one other, we assume we can talk about regional significance of everything in the bill, and it is true that in a couple of areas, we do some very local things, such as wastewater infrastructure, but we usually do them within the context of a program that's established. But we usually do them within the context of a program that's established, where someone looks at all of these projects and assures that everybody is treated the same, that there is equality in terms of how everyone in the state is treated. It gets harder when we write into a bill something that is local, and there are hundreds of them. And I would just cite if a county jail, or a community center, or a high school, or a community sports field, if those kinds of issues are written in this bill, next year, you have the potential of hundreds of them. And so those are, I think, two cautionary notes. We all, I think, bear a responsibility as we deal with our local communities, what requests we bring. And I think that's something, this is one of those bills where we all work together that we can all help with. But for tonight, we come together to pass a good bill, and members, I encourage a green vote.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Considine.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Chair Erdahl, you are a man of your word, and I very much appreciate that. Again, the security hospital has been a priority, and I appreciate the fact that you managed to get it in there. Thank you.
The member from Meeker, Representative Erdahl.
Thank you. It's a great bill. Whoops, vote green.
Seeing no further discussion, the clerk will take the roll on the bill. There being 119 ayes and 11 nays, the bill has passed as amended and its title agreed Without objection, we'll revert to introduction of bills, introduction of first reading of House files.
Introduction of First Reading of House Files Six through House File Eight.
First reading, House Files Six through House File Eight. Representative Peppin offers the following motion.
Peppin moves that the chief clerk be, and he is hereby instructed to inform the Senate and the governor by message that the House of Representatives is about to adjourn the 2017 special session, signee die.
Recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Peppin, to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. As the chief clerk said, this allows him to inform the Senate and the governor that the House is about to adjourn the 2017 special session, signee die. Appreciate your support.
Any discussion on the motion? The member from Hennepin, Representative Hortman.
The sooner the better. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. Representative Peppin offers the following motion.
Peppin moves that the chief clerk be and is hereby authorized to correct and approve the Journal of the House 2017 special session for today, Thursday, May 25, 2017, and that he be authorized to include in the journal for today any subsequent proceedings.
I recognize the member from Hennepin, Representative Peppin, to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. This just allows the chief clerk to approve and correct the journal for today's special session. I'd appreciate your support.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails. Representative Peppin.
I move that the House do now adjourn this special session, signee die.
Representative Peppin moves that the House adjourn this special session, signee die. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion prevails, and this special session is adjourned, signee die.